Ryan, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council meeting. Tonight, tonight's meeting is strictly through Zoom webinar due to the snowstorm that we had today. The DPW would have been unable to set everything up for us, so pursuant to the governor, we are able to do it on Zoom. So I would just like us all to take a moment of silence right at the moment to consider all that's happening around us and in the world and say a little thanks for only a couple inches of snow. Okay, thank you. I have to announce that this meeting, we are being recorded for the purpose of minutes and through the Zoom. And I would ask Jeannie if we have any public comments?
No, no one signed up.
No one signed up?
Correct.
Okay. Council comments. Any counselor have any, any comments?
Ralph, there are a couple people in the Zoom audience that have their hands raised. I don't know if they have comments or public comment.
Would you like me to pull the first one in?
Yes, please.
Pulling in Bill.
Hi, Bill. You're muted right at the moment. I don't know if you can hear us.
Oh, great. Sorry about that. I had a little bit of trouble getting logged in, or not logged in, but um, I think my computer slowed down a little bit. Am I coming through all right?
Yes.
Great, thank you. It's asking me to start my videos. Is that a requirement? I don't have the capabilities of doing that right now.
It is not a requirement. We are under a public comments. So is there a comment or a statement that you'd like to make?
Yes, absolutely. Firstly, I'd like to recognize today as the day that Dresden, Germany was melted to the ground by the Allied forces, one of the biggest atrocities that is unspoken of in the world today. So just to try to bring light to that, but anyways, the reason, the reason for my comment is we're about halfway through Black History Month, and I would like for the city, I haven't really heard a whole lot about this month, being available for us to recognize the plight of the African American in our nation, and I am for truth and transparency on the matter. So I'd like to get into a little bit of something here for you guys. I did some digging and I found some information on GTVflyers.com, and I found out that the majority, the vast majority of the ship owners that were transporting the Africans, that were going and purchasing the Africans from the African tribal leaders and bringing them to America, were in fact owned by members of the Jewish community such as Isaac Levy, Aaron Lopez, Moses Levy, Mordecai Gomez, David Gomez, the ship names, you can find, you can find this information on GTVflyers.com, like Isaac Asher, Jacob Bar Simmons, Hayman Levy, and the reason why I bring this up is because I don't feel like it's appropriate that we teach the European population in America, in our state, everywhere, that they were the ones who ran the slave trade, the African slave trade. Louis Farrakhan is quoted as saying, "How did I get to be an anti-Semite? What have I done? I told the truth about Jewish involvement in the slave trade." You know, the, like, the, most of the auctions, the slave auctions were not open on Saturdays because that is the Sabbath, and I just really would like for people to look into this. I would like for, like I said, truth and transparency on the matter. We can't keep teaching these European-American children that they were evil because of this thing that another group of people did. You know, forty percent of the Jewish population owned slaves, only one percent of the European-American population owned slaves, and actually, the first court case in America that deemed slavery legal was a man, you can look up his name, Anthony Johnson, he was actually an African, and he owned Irish and African slaves. And so I just find it to be outrageous, honestly, and I would like this yoke that's tied around white children's neck to be removed and placed on the proper, well, I'm kind of blanking on the word, the people that actually ran this slave trade. So that's all I had to say. Thank you for giving me my time and good evening.
Thank you for the comments. All right, we got one more? Yes. Coming in now? Hello?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic, my goodness. Today, I really wanted to bring some awareness to a nonprofit that I work for. It's called the AWG. We help allocate funds for people who have HIV and AIDS. Mostly, it's just getting antivirals where they need to go to help extend their life as much as possible. Recently, though, I've noticed that we've had a real uptick in children needing our services, and I'd really like to look into that. I know this isn't really your guys' purview, but there are laws that are allowing children to actually get infected, oddly enough. I don't know if you know much about circumcision, but there has been children being infected and even dying of herpes. If you go on NYC.gov, you'll see that this is happening all over the US. And personally, I find it disgusting. You know, most of the people that I work with have been trafficked. I mean, most of the people that I see on a daily basis are thirty-five and have sold themselves. So when I have children coming into me needing these medications, which, by the way, are not made for children, I mean, they don't have a children's dose of these things. They're taking adult medication, and some of them maybe not dying from, you know, AIDS, but they're dying because they're overdosing on medication given to them just trying to extend their lives. I find it really scary, and when I, I spoke to a lawyer attempting to, you know, help the children that were coming there, and I was told that it's completely illegal, that it's some religious practice to cut a baby and then put their mouth, like, these grown men are literally putting their mouths on genital, genitals, babies' genitals, eight days old, and they're, they're cutting them, and then they orally molest them, infecting them with these things. And when I find out as a third party, I'm told that it's a legal practice, and I, I have no idea what we can do as a society, but we have to be past this. We have to be better than purposely infecting babies. I, I just, I find it really disgusting, and I hope, I hope that you guys educate yourselves and visit NYC.gov and look up oral circumcision and look at all the babies that are perishing from this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Hey, thank you. And Ryan, don't see anyone else with their hands up. So we will go on to council comments. I just wanted to note, it was an oversight on my part. Connor was appointed to the Capitol Committee and has been working away at the Capitol Committee as the ex officio for the Town Council with full voting rights, and I just wanted to mention that and thank him for stepping up to take care of us.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Town manager report. Tom has asked if we could skip over this this evening because we have a meeting in two weeks, and with all the different items going on, I told him I didn't think that was any issue, that as long as we get it done in February, that's good with me. So we're gonna skip over to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, sir.
Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements. So I have none. Did anyone else receive any? So what I will mention is, over the last couple of weeks, I have been into Town Hall into our folders, and some of you have not picked up your mail, and I had asked Jeannie to bring it tonight, but we're now meeting on Zoom. So if you get a chance, there are different items that show up from time to time. If you could stop by and just pick it up, that'd be great. Trying to waste four more minutes. Jeannie?
Yeah, I also have the warrant for the presidential primary election each of you need to sign that I was gonna bring tonight to have you sign, so I need to post that by February twenty-seven, and that's our next meeting. It'll be too late to post, you know, for Mass General Law. So if you can come into my office at some point Saturday, the twenty-fourth, is the first day of early voting. It's a Saturday, and I'll be there all the paper if you want to do it Saturday during the week, if that's more convenient.
Yeah, Jeannie, I was planning on early voting that day, so I'll, I'll come in on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, it's there. Thank you. Thank you, Ralph.
I will try to step in tomorrow since I have a Capitol meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So I am gonna jump to the next item. Even though we're a minute early, I will discuss it. Back at our January ninth meeting, we had a public hearing in regards to East Village Tavern. I believe we voted on the change of manager, and then they had a change of premises which was tabled. Actually, it was continued to a public hearing tonight on February thirteenth that has not gone through and been completed with the Planning Board. We don't know when the Planning Board is gonna finalize it and finish it up. So I'm gonna make the recommendation that we close the public hearing until such time that all of that's done, and then we'll re-advertise for a new one instead of just continually meeting to meeting going on with it. Is there anyone that has any other thoughts on it? And Jeannie, that, that's probably the cleanest way to do it, and that way there it gets re-advertised.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So although it's not on the agenda, I would, I would ask for someone to make a motion that we close the public hearing for East Village Tavern.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, and Counselor Boucher is not with us this evening. Okay. Six fourteen. Anyone have any comments for a minute? Or is your phone a little bit faster than mine? Okay, I think by the time we read this in, it'll be six fifteen. Sound about right, Jeannie?
Ralph, I'm happy to take over Matt's responsibility or read the first item in.
So actually, that, now that you brought that up, I am gonna have you, when we do the motions, if you would take over Matt's motions at the same time, that would be great. So it is six fifteen, so we have a public hearing tonight for the for the Community Preservation in regards to the Brown Farm. This has to do with the barn demolition. So the protocol says this is a public hearing to approve thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Recreation Fund account for the Brown Farm Barn Demolition Project. Council members present are Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, John Torshia, Ralph Page, Anna Jones, and Kathy Hill. I would ask the clerk to read in the legal notice.
Eastland Midletown Council will hold a public hearing on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street to address a Community Preservation Act application for the Brown Farm Barn Demolition Project. Let me just interject that because we moved the meeting to Zoom, there was a sign put on the Council on Aging that because of the weather forecast, we're moving to Zoom. I also put on the town's website and the bulletin board of the town clerk's office to cover our bases. Okay, to continue, information relating to this application is available for review by the public, the town clerk's office, and on the town's website. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the Council, being our probability town clerk of the Council.
Okay, thank you. So normally, for the Community Preservation, we would ask Tony Zampacini to step forwards and speak. Because we are on Zoom, Tony doesn't have the internet capabilities. I was just looking in the audience to see if someone from the Rec Department. See Donna? So I would, actually, Tom, do you want to touch basis on what they were looking at, or would you rather me do it?
For the community?
Community Preservation, the Brown Farm Demolition.
Yeah, sure. I think we got some correspondence from somebody at CPC as well. Is that correct? I think we got an email from Liz asking, well, Tony asked her to email, so maybe he had a premonition about this Zoom meeting. So basically, she says the CPC fully endorses the use of CPC funds for the Brown Farm Barn Demolition and the Brown Farm Community Gardens Fruit Trees Projects. Please pass along our endorsement and recommendation of these projects to the Town Council. Thank you, Liz. So the first one, I, I actually was, put the application in for the barn demolition, which was the, if you've been up there, the front part of the barn that is well unsafe at this point. So we'd like to get that down and make some more room up there for, well, any number of activities and/or recreation uses. That's, that's pretty much the gist of it. There wasn't too much to the application. The, the conversation wasn't too long at CPC. That was a couple months ago now, I suppose. But I'm happy to answer any questions if, if there, if we gotta fill in some, some gaps.
So just to let everyone know, this is what was considered the horse stables. It's the wood portion of the building, not the large arena. The roof is caving in on it. It is unsafe. This was something that, oh, roughly ten years ago, the CPC had allocated funds to remove the entire building. But before that, it went in front of the Planning Board and other departments to see what their thoughts were, and if there was uses and stuff on it, and that's when it was brought up that, hey, the arena's still in good shape, even though the stables aren't, maybe we should be doing something with that. So it got put on hold for a while. Now it's coming back. From what I understand, through the Rec Department and all, it seems to make sense to remove that front section of the building. It'll clear space in there, whether it be for future splash park or outdoor pickleball courts or something. And it'll make the whole building safer. Any questions from anyone? So this is a public hearing. So I would ask if there's any attendees in the audience that have any thoughts on this that would like to speak, do please raise your hand. Okay, Ryan, I don't see any hands being raised. Do you?
Nope, got no hands up.
Okay, so I will bring it back to the council. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, Marilyn?
Thank you, Ralph. Do we know, first of all, do we know what account this expenditure is coming from and what the status is on the amount in that account?
That was my question as well.
Okay. So I do know this is coming out of the Open Space and Recreation Account.
Okay.
Tom, do you know if we have an updated amount on that?
Let me check.
I know I know the undesignated account had like one point two or one point three million in it.
Right. I wanna say it was in the packet last meeting, wasn't it?
Information here.
The totals were, yes.
Yeah, my only thought was from my recollection, putting on my former hat, was I think it was below a hundred thousand, but it may have been replenished.
Okay.
Oh, I found Kim's memo to us from last meeting. So the Open Space account had one hundred thirteen thousand four hundred four dollars in it.
Okay.
Thanks, Connor.
You're welcome.
Take me a minute there.
Guess that's the one nice thing about doing it on Zoom is I can search around for the docs fast.
And so I do know that CPC, one of their thoughts is if a project's coming forwards, like a recreation project, to use the money out of the recreation account first and then go into the undesignedated, because the undesignedated can be used anywhere. So yes, there is funding to cover it. Is there any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So we're only taking down a portion of it, not the, the entire barn?
Right.
Yes. So the arena in the back, which is the metal structure in the back, will be over time repaired, and the metal siding will be replaced, and I know this year we had actually talked about housing the ice skating rink inside of it. It was brought up with an all. But due to weather, we've only really had four or five days where it could have even been used. So they chose not to set it up because they didn't wanna spend the money on the liner only to sit there with water in it and never freeze.
So if you're looking at the picture, I don't know what page this is on, fourteen, with where the fruit trees are kind of designated? What are we getting rid of?
So you were up there either this year or last year for the Palm Festival.
I know, and I can't remember.
When you come straight into the back.
Yeah.
L-shaped building.
Okay, right there. Okay.
Everything on the left-hand side that comes forward is going. It's all the wood structure. The metal structure in the back is staying. The metal structure sixty feet by a hundred and sixty feet.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then. I don't remember. Was there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, having a motion made in seconded. Again, roll call vote, Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I am also a yes. So the public hearing is closed, so then I would entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space slash Recreation Fund for the Brown Farm Barn Demolition Project.
I second that.
Okay, having a motion made in seconded, is there any further discussion on it? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote, Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I am a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes. Okay, we've got a couple minutes before, so what's the wishes? Move out of order to eight A Licensing Matters? Would someone like to make a motion to move out of order?
Sure.
Six thirty?
I move that we move out of order to eight A Orders of the Day Licensing Matters until such time as at six thirty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Eight A is Licensing Matters. Eight A one is Licensing Committee Update. Kathy, do you have an update on the licensing issues?
Yes, thank you. I can give a quick update. There's only one item right now that is changed since our last council meeting, and that is the matter of the owner of Zane's Smoke Shop approached the clerk to ask that the thousand-dollar license fee that he had paid in the fall, in anticipation of this calendar year, be refunded to him, since later in the fall, he officially sold the business. The Licensing Subcommittee met a couple of weeks back to review that, and the consensus was from the committee, in fact, it was unanimous that one of the underlying conditions for any license holder is that they are the businesses current in all matters financial in the town as well as in compliance with various town codes for building and such, fire codes and such. Jeannie reached out, and so the, the consensus of the committee was that, assuming Zane's was current on all of its financial obligations, that the committee would recommend to the council to refund the one thousand to, to the business, assuming there was no outstanding balances. Our collector of taxes has informed Jeannie that Mr., I can't remember Zane's.
Muhammad Tala.
Correct. Thank you, Jeannie. Still had outstanding, an outstanding balance of three thousand three hundred dollars from penalties that were owed to the town for tobacco violations in the calendar year twenty-three. So the town collector through MGL has the authority to hold that one thousand dollars and apply it to the balance. So that, in fact, has occurred, and Muhammad's outstanding balance to the town is two thousand three hundred dollars, which is still, regardless that he has sold the business, is still a matter that he as the previous owner is still responsible for. So in effect, it did not have to come before this council because of the statutes in place to recover taxes and fines and such that are outstanding. So outstanding. So, and so that matter is resolved, and, uh, I'm told by Genie that the new owner, Mr. Ali Sure, has begun the application process for licensure for, uh, the business, which will still remain as Zane's Smoke Shop, I'm told, right? Jenny, the name won't. Yeah.
The application.
So that's it in a nutshell.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, it is six thirty, so, um, we will move, uh, back to public hearings. And, um, we will be holding a public hearing. So this is a public hearing to approve one thousand uh, six hundred and fifty dollars from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Recreation Fund Account. Um, account for the Brown Farm, uh, Community Gardens Fruit Trees Project. Uh, council members, uh, present are Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, Jonathan Torrisa, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, and Ralph Page. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice in.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. In the media room of Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street to address the Community Preservation Act application for the Brown Farm Community Gardens Fruit Trees Project. Information relating to this application is available for review by the public, the town clerk's office, and on the town's website. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar with the below link for the Council Gene R. Club wedding.
Thank you. So again, this would be the time I would ask, uh, Mr. Zampa Cina to step forwards and explain it. Um, but with, uh, this project, I am, uh, I'm gonna take the lead on this. And, um, so this is a project that started, um, back when the community gardens were, um, first introduced and, um, brought forwards. Um, one of the issues that was brought up by the neighbors was some screening issues from the properties on Anna Marie Lane. And it was talked about that under the, uh, memorandum of understanding that some type of trees um, or shrubs or something could be put in there to help screen their houses from the gardens. Um, their thought was more, uh, the people in the gardens doing work, being able to look into the backyards and all. So at that time, we had looked into doing some tall arborvitae's and stuff. Uh, the cost was prohibitive. Um, so I have suggested that they look to do some apple trees instead of doing arborvitae's, which tend to get eaten by the deer a lot more readily. Um, the cost of an apple tree, which is gonna grow quite a bit larger than what the arborvitae would, is about half of the cost. Um, I have, um, stated that if this goes through, I would be more than happy to, as a landscaper, to at no charge plant all the trees, uh, mow the area, do the mulching and all around them. Um, and for that reason, um, I will not be voting on this tonight. Um, although all the work I'm doing is donated, I just don't like the optics of, um, voting on something of which I'm gonna be that involved with. So I will be abstaining from the vote. Um, uh, it is roughly thirty trees that'll be planted all along the northeast side of the gardens. Um, again, it'll break up anything from the gardens to, um, the houses on Anna Marie. Is there any, any questions from the council first? Marilyn?
Not a question, but a comment. Um, I I think the addition of the trees basically restores the look and feel of the farm. And, and since we're not putting a big structure, structure up there right now, I think it's wonderful that we are adding that piece to a parcel that is growing in use every year. We find something else to do there. So thanks for your involvement, Ralph. I appreciate it.
So part of this was to try and make this area more of an edible garden. So whether it be fruit trees, plants, uh, you know, blueberry bushes, or the actual gardens, it sort of entails it all together into that one area. And I do believe, um, well, at least I'm hoping going forwards that a business in town may be donating the blueberry bushes, which will go in on the westerly side, which will protect the other house from the gardens. Um, so hopefully donations coming in, and, uh, that'll be a good, uh, good section. Is there any other questions before I open it up to the public? Kathy?
Not a question. Um, more a comment, uh, as Marilyn just said, thank you for your willingness to roll up your sleeves literally and, and help with it. Um, it's very heartening to see, uh, the potential for the, the Brown Farm come to reality in first, the, uh, fall festivals that the rec department has, uh, put on in the last couple of years. But the potential for the skating rink, Mother Nature willing, uh, to be housed there and with the demolition of the barn, uh, potential for additional fields or whatever the activity is most deemed suitable, as well as we know that the, uh, the gardens that the public are involved in, and, um, though I've not seen it, uh, I'm told that they participate in a kind of a, I don't want to say a farmer's market, but a, uh, product giveaway for folks who want to be, um, take advantage of it. It's, uh, this, this parcel is really becoming, um, another jewel in the crown of East Long Meadow, and it's just, I'm just very pleased to see all of this positive activity going forward.
Absolutely. So at this time, I'm, John?
This is gonna say.
John?
Um, I, I just wanted to echo what, 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 um, Kathy Marilyn said earlier, but, um, in, in my time on CPC, I think there was just a lot of untapped, uh, potential that Brown Farm has, so it's really great to see, um, uh, hopefully this council and then the CPC having done multiple projects with Brown Farm over the years. Um, so definitely bringing up a really great piece of open land.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? Okay, if there's any in the one in the audience that would like to speak with regards to this, if they could raise their hand. I don't see any hands up. Ryan, do you?
I don't see any hands up.
So at this time, I will bring it back to the board and entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
So moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna? You're muted.
Yes.
Okay, and I will abstain completely from the voting. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve one thousand six hundred fifty dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space slash Recreation Fund for the Brown Farm Community Gardens Fruit Trees Project.
I'll second that.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And I abstain. Thank you very much. And we will move on to, um, eight B one, financial matters. This is, um, the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program Statement of Interest for Maple Shade Roof Project. So Tom, if I'm correct, this is, um, just a statement of interest that we have to submit by March, sometime in March, March first or something.
You, uh, we also have, uh, Gordon in the audience, if you would, if you, if it's your pleasure.
Uh, if Gordon would like to come in and speak to it, I would love to have him.
Well, he made the long trip. He made the long trip on all the way.
I'm pulling him in, uh, he didn't confirm, but I pulled him in anyway.
Hi, Gordon.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Gordon.
Good evening.
Did he just speak? Um, so this.
MSBA project.
Correct. Simply, uh, as you said, Ralph, this is, um, simply an approval to put in the statement of interest, and then we hopefully, uh, go through their process and are selected, and then we would, uh, go into an accelerated repair project to fix the flat portions of Maple Shade's roof. Be very similar to the two projects we did over at Meadowbrook. We did windows and doors, and we did a roof project at Meadow, two separate projects.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions, Anna?
I just had a very quick question. Um, does putting in the statement of interest now that we've, um, you know, successfully cleared the high school for approval, does, will that potentially impact the viability of this project, or is it sort of separate from that?
It's, uh, completely separate. So you have a core program which handles comprehensive projects similar to the high school project, and then you have an accelerated repair program, which actually just came back online this year. Uh, it was offline while they were figuring out what to do with, um, the incredible spike in inflation the last two years.
I would just add out.
Yes.
I was just gonna add, Ralph, too, that, um, this particular project, um, for the statement of interest has been something that's been on the the capital plan that's been submitted to the capital committee and the town budget side for quite a few years. So this, hopefully, if the town were to be selected, would be a great way for us to get that project done sooner than later.
Let's think positive when we get selected. Any other questions, comments? So I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Okay, I have that. This is a long one. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the Town Council of the Town of East Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be dated March first, twenty twenty-four for the Maple Shade Elementary School located at one hundred seventy-five Maple Shade Avenue, East Long Meadow, Mass. zero one zero two eight, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, boilers, windows, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of East Long Meadow to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second, John?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Uh, Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I am a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Great. Gordon, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll get to work writing it. Thanks, Gordon. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, uh, financial matters, uh, B two, um, a firefighter safety equipment grant. Um, is there a motion to accept?
Yes, I move to accept a nineteen thousand firefighters, nineteen thousand dollar firefighter safety equipment grant to the East Long Meadow Fire Department per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
I'll second that.
Thank you, John. Having a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion on the grant? Hearing none. A roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you very much. Um, B three, um, the approval of the Mass DOT Fair Share Aportion for F Y twenty-four. Is there a motion to accept?
I move we accept the Mass DOT Fair Share Apportionment for F Y twenty-four of three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars to the Town of East Long Meadow per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section, uh, fifty-three A.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Connor. So this is additional to the chapter ninety money. Um, is there any questions, comments?
Just one.
Yes.
I just want to make sure my assumption is correct. So since this is coming from that uh, fair share amendment that the voters passed, is this something that we can expect, maybe not the same amount, but the same sort of approval that we have to do year after year?
I, I hope. It seems like there, uh, uh, is a genuine, um, thought that the, the chapter ninety funds for the communities need to be supplemented in some way. Uh, a couple of years ago, we had the rap. Now we have the fair share. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, yes, we'll be accepting more, uh, monies of at least this magnitude.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
So if I remember from reading the paperwork, right, this had to do with the tax on people earning above a million dollars, and it's proportionally split through the different cities and towns, um, which we can definitely use it, um, the three hundred and eight thousand, although it will probably go pretty quick, um, every little bit helps, so. Is there any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Um, motion made, seconded, roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I am also a yes. Okay. Um, next up is eight B four, um, donations made to the library and the council of aging. Is there a motion, uh, to accept?
I make a motion to accept donations made to the library and council on aging totaling eight thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and five cents as presented per, uh, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
I am a yes. John?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, B five, um, approve the funding from the Water Enterprise Fund Projects in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, is there a motion for B five?
I make a motion to approve the funding of Water Enterprise Fund Projects in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-one cents from retained earnings.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? So this was, this was previously approved, and um, this vote is just to pay for this out of retained earnings instead of bonding or any other way. But this is a capital project that we had already approved, so it's not something new that all of a sudden we're asking for additional monies. So with that statement, is there anything else? Roll call vote. We'll start with Anna.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes. Uh, I'm a yes. John?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. We will go to B six, which is the funding from the Sewer Enterprise Fund Projects. Um, of forty four thousand such and from retained earnings. Is there a motion for B six?
I move to approve the funding of Sewer Enterprise Fund Projects in the amount of forty four thousand, fifty nine dollars and twenty cents from retained earnings.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Um, B seven, uh, funding of twenty two thousand from free cash. For a soil assessment. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve funding twenty two thousand dollars from free cash for soil assessment. And above ground storage tank replacement at the Norton Street Transfer Station.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? So yes, I have discussion because I think the public should hear what this is.
Yeah, we have.
Uh, would you like to give a, a, just a quick overview?
Well, uh, Mr. Fenny also drove all this way, um, and is in the audience and I think.
I would love to bring him in then. I know he loves to participate.
Already pulling him in.
All right, here we go. Everybody hear me?
Hey, Bruce.
Uh, all right, I'll kind of give you a brief uh, overview of what uh, this money is for. Um, so this uh, this was a oil uh, leak that happened at our transfer station, our waste oil filling station. Um, in the late fall. Um, and actually a pipe came dislodged from a filling station which enters a building then into our waste oil tank. So that oil, I mean, that uh, pipe got uh, dislodged, came apart, so there was some oil that spilt within the containment area. Around the oil tank, so. Um, roughly eight hundred gallons were pumped out of the tank and the containment area. And roughly a hundred gallons spilt within the containment area. So we, we found this out, um. And obviously, uh, we had to report it and also Tom Spate, our local D E P authority. Has been up there doing site inspections. Um. He's had some problems with our filling station up there because people tend to spill, don't typically. Um, get all the oil with into that um, receptacle there, so. Um, he, he, well, the D E P is making us do a soil assessment to see. Um, how far this waste oil has entered the cap of the landfill. Um, so therefore we had to hire an L S B, a licensed site professional that deals with hazardous materials. Um, and this company was tied and bond and the amount was twenty two thousand dollars for the circus. And that's about it. Can I answer any further questions?
So Bruce, if I understand correctly, we have a containment area that's a concrete area. The tank is within the concrete area and any spillage. Occurred strictly like right on the edge of it where you're pouring your container. Into the funnel which goes into. That area. I mean, I, I just, I mean, I'm looking at it and I, it just seems like um. We have to be talking a, a small amount. I mean, I, I've been up there with five gallon pails to pour them in and. I can't imagine that there's a huge amount of um. Seepage.
Um. Sure, yes, and I, I agree totally with you, uh, Ralph. Um, our first assessment, we did some uh. I guess test sampling and pulling back the uh, area where we fill. Uh, we went down about four feet. Uh, we took pictures, obviously, uh, with Tiger Bond. The L S P and felt it was no need uh, to go any further based on our um, observations. Um, so that's in, in the report right now, it's going in front of D E P, but also the D E P is requiring us to move. Um, remove the concrete area, uh, which is the containment to see if anything uh, was released under the landfill. As you all know, it is a landfill. There's already oil at that site. Um, I find this um, this action a little ridiculous, um, but unfortunately. I have to follow the D E P's orders.
So when a new containment area goes in, are they looking to make it a little bit larger so that when you're filling, you're within the containment area?
Um, so actually, um, D E P has shared with me. Their model of what they've seen at other transfer stations to use. It's actually a self-contained unit. It actually, you have to walk up a set of stairs. Um, so there's no containment area, nothing. Um, and there's, I guess there's very little room for error on our human error when filling this tank. Um, but I still, I still, there is a human element of error that goes along with any of these items.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? I could go on, Bruce, if you want.
I, I could too.
Okay, we've had a motion made. It's been seconded. Discussions happened. Um, Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I am a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, containment area done. We are moving on to B eight. Which is a motion to approve funding of thirteen thousand, six hundred uh, for the Mass Trails Grant Application. Is there a motion for this?
I move to approve funding thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars from free cash for Mass Trails Grant Application Design.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, motion made and seconded. Um, so Tom, this is. The grant to look into the possibility of extending the rail trail, if I'm correct.
Correct. Uh, specifically from Maple to Westwood. Also, this is the feasibility study, basically, uh, application grant, uh, grant application. Uh, V H B will be assisting. Um. And uh, yeah, so I think our, this is our. Our share of the grant is eighty five hundred. And um, V H B's services are fifty one hundred, so that's the thirteen six.
Yep. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Uh, Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's an exciting one.
It is, it is. Actually, a lot of people have talked over the years about getting the rail trail extended and hopefully we'll be able to do it. So let's move on, uh, B nine. Which is um, ARPA funding to look to transfer that. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the transfer of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Funds. In the amount of six hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars and eighty seven cents. From account two four one four, five nine zero zero. To the M L P account six zero three zero dash four nine zero zero.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Further discussion? So. Tom, this is to create an account where different funds are going in. For the engineering. If I'm correct, of the M L P.
Co- to pay for, to pay, uh, the, the account's created. Kim has created the account. Um, this is just to appropriate the money to that account. To pay for the engineering services of uh, the agreement with uh, Westfield Gas, uh, Whip City Fiber.
And this is the engineering, well, this, once all of the money's in, will be for the engineering of all of the M L P for the town.
The, right.
Okay.
Yep. And Andrew Short is here from uh, Whip City Fiber as well as our uh. Our host, um, you know, I don't know if he wants to turn his camera on or not, but if you have any questions, we are more than willing to answer.
Can he do better on the price?
That's for the engineering. It's also for uh, permitting and the beginning.
Right. Yep.
So this is all part of the make ready then? This would also include any permits for the polls? The um, fees to make them ready and all to, to run the.
Yeah, so the, the last page of the agreement there, page sixteen, has the breakdown of what that. What that dollar amount comes out to. Uh, the poll application fees are four hundred and forty five thousand and change and. Um, engineering design and field services is just under three hundred thousand, two ninety one, three seventy two.
It, it doesn't include the actual make ready work, just the, it gets us, it gets us to the line.
Just the application number. Yeah, yeah, so that's the big part here is uh, not only to appropriate this um. Undesignated ARPA money that's um, needs to be appropriated by September. Uh, also, um, one of our goals as a town. Uh, it seems for a very long time is to provide uh, a, a, another. Uh, another communication uh, option for our residents. Uh, so. Um, this is another exciting project that I think, uh, again, like we said last time, uh, was overwhelmingly supported by the voters. Um, so, uh, with that, uh, we're certainly willing to answer any questions, uh, i- if there are any.
Just related, um, do we, uh, so i- if this is approved, um, what would be the remaining amount of ARPA? Do we have a substantial amount of ARPA funds left?
No, not to be appropriated, uh, John. I think we were, well, once we get through the budget. I think I've, I feel like I say that with everything. Once we get through the budget. Uh, no, we'll have to figure out where our existing ARPA projects are. Um, and what, if any, money needs to be uh, sort of re-appropriated to another project if. If we're not spending up to that, to that. Amount, but no, this is the last piece of un- undesignated funding from ARPA.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if I remember right, Tom, the ARPA funding was, um, it was highly suggested that the money be used for. Um, items that are more long term.
Correct.
And this. With any luck, it hits that objective perfectly.
Yes, it does.
Because we're hoping this is for the long term and. No new technology comes up, um, that this will get us through the next uh, thirty years or more. Does anyone else have any uh, questions on this? Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. I apologize for not sending this sooner because I obviously didn't do my mental math right before. On that last page that you were referring to, Tom. So it's that four forty five, eight sixty one plus the two ninety one, three seventy two. Gives us like seven thirty seven.
Correct.
Approximately. But then. If we approve this for the remainder of our funds of six twenty one. And then our next motion of one eighty nine from free cash, that gives us like eight, ten, so. Do you know what the difference is between?
So I, yep, absolutely. Uh, I had added um, a ten percent contingency, which is sort of. Uh, standard practice, industry standard. I can't turn my engineering brain off. Um. So w- we added that uh, contingency on there, uh. Fully thinking that this M L P account. Uh, that we just set up is going to be in use for a very long time for just this purpose, so. Uh, even if we didn't use all the uh, the contingency. Uh, obviously, that, that money would continue to go towards uh, our fiber to the home initiative.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
You got it. Good question. Sorry, I, the math was not adding up, was it?
Okay, with that, we've had a motion made and seconded. A roll call vote. Um, Jonathan?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Okay, the next up, um, basically continues under the M L P for another transfer. Um, and is there a motion for item B ten? John? B ten.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of a hundred and eighty nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty three cents from free cash. To M L P Municipal Light Plan Account six zero three zero dash four nine zero zero.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Um, this is basically just what we just talked about. This just further uh. Um, funds everything, um, and hopefully gets everything in the ballpark and going. Um, but with that, does anyone have any questions coming from the free cash aspect? Okay, seeing none. Uh, roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Uh, Connor?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay. Um, the next up is B eleven, which is um. A motion to approve uh, the authorization for the town manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. Is there someone that would like to make the motion in place of Matt?
Yes, I, I make a motion to approve the town manager to authorize a contract. Inter govern- intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westfield Gas and Electric Light Department. And the Town of East Long Meadow for a period which exceeds three years. Per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve.
Second.
Okay, having a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
One question.
Yes.
So I noticed, like, I, I know the intent is for it to exceed three years as our motion says. I'm just wondering where in the agreement it actually says that, because on page two, under the term section. It says that it would, this agreement would be effective on the effective date that it's signed, but it would terminate. Either when the services are completed or two years from the effective date. Is that two years a typo?
Uh. No, um. Uh, or maybe, um, yeah.
So I.
The. The agreement, the intent of the agreement is to make our partnership five years so that. Um, if Westfield Gas and Electric does all this work and designs our system, basically, that we don't take that design and go somewhere else. Uh, within that five-year window, so. Um, that is a very good question. Um. Right, you got, you uh, have any thoughts there? Or should we pull in Andrew? That's a, that's a good question. Maybe it's just a typo, but let's, let's talk it all the way out.
I'll pull uh, Andrew in.
Why he's coming in, I did notice on the very first page, um, the date is twenty twenty three.
We've been working on, we've been working on this for a while.
We, we have, and I, I did notice going through that there's probably a few different. Scenarios like that, that'll have to be uh, initialed and changed.
Yeah.
And I assume the two-year was probably one of those.
So I think that the two-year is the work, but the further in the contract, there's the exclusivity thing, which is for five years.
Oh, okay.
Understanding too, yeah. But Andrew is here. If uh, you want to clarify, Andrew?
So you're correct. Two years after the work is completed, so you've got the design, engineering and make ready. Um, that's not the construction and typically those things do take a period of time, so it's two years after that. Work was referenced in the Exhibit A is completed, and I think the um. The five years is really about, it's a maximum term of five years. We're not trying to hold you to six years, seven years, eight years. It's, it's defined as a five.
Yeah. So yeah, it's just further, further down the document, Connor, but thank, okay, yeah.
Section ten, yeah.
And we'll we'll do a little more. Like you said, Ralph, there's probably some typos and some like two twenty-threes that need to be changed, but that can all that can all be done. It's not necessarily this contract that you're you're authorizing me to sign. It's just the period of the contract.
That makes sense. I have no problem with the five-year term. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same.
Yeah, no, I got you. Thank you.
Marilyn?
Just a quick question for Tom, please. Has Jesse looked at this?
I believe he has. Actually, I know he has because we were looking through, we had to, we had to we had to sign some things with all the utilities so we could get in the queue for them. And so I was hitting him with fiber optic documents for 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 about three months. So yeah, but I think when we just sort of my practice in the office has been when it gets down to this about to get signed, I'll just have him peek through it again. That's that's sort of my my practice in here.
Well, it's certainly not my area of expertise, but as I read through it, I I got the feeling that, you know, this was a contract that perhaps some language might have come from another contract, which is fine, but I want to make sure that East Long Meadow is protected in what we're doing. That's all.
Absolutely, absolutely. So not only would I ask for your blessing, I would also make sure Jesse tips his hat before I sign my name.
Perfect. Thank you.
You got it.
Any other questions? Having a motion made and seconded, this is a roll call vote. I will start with Marilyn.
Yes.
I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We are on our way.
Yeah, this is exciting stuff. I think this will we'll probably look back on this, these votes as something that started something special in in the community. So thank you.
This is very appropriate that we're doing it through a Zoom meeting also. Okay. Next up, we have B twelve, which is another financial matter. This is for forty-three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars for a conversion van. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to approve funding forty-three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars from Free Cash to match the state earmark grant for a rear lift conversion van for the Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Yes. So as some of you know, we were hoping to get a grant that covered almost the whole thing. And a few weeks ago, the state cut down roughly in half what the grant was going to be. I proposed to Tom that, you know, this would basically be like a matching grant, so the town would put up half, the grant covers the other half. I thought this was something that was definitely needed by the Council of Aging. And I think if half of it's basically being paid for by a grant, that this is a great project and a a great investment. I don't know if Tom had anything else he wanted to add.
Sure. Well, first, Erin sends her apologies. She could not be torn away from her previous engagement this evening. She is sort of we've been we've been chatting about her fleet because obviously I think a couple of months ago, I I read you the numbers about how often the tri-town trolley gets used. And so we are sort of, we're going to have a conversation and work with Bruce on sort of the sort of a fleet maintenance plan because she's her vehicles are all getting old, so much so that she has, as Connor and and Connor knows, because he's on capital, has sort of got on the capital plan radar to to try to figure out a way to to keep her from, well, not from aging, but at least some some way to replace these things in in short order. So this would kind of get us to that point. Connor, I don't know if you want, if you you probably know a little bit more about her submission for capital, but you know, again, she was excited about this. This started a couple of years ago when the when the van was seventy-five thousand dollars. So so that was the full amount of the van and you know, this is not an exact match because the price is now up to eighty-one thousand and change and you know, in a couple of months, we'll go up even further. But again, we're we're essentially getting half the van for 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 Aaron. So that that's about the spiel again. Erin passes along her apologies for not being able to be here.
Yeah, I can add just a smidge to that. Like Tom said, this is kind of like the first step in a slightly larger plan for her in terms of the the van fleet. Of course, half of this being the the grant from the state. But then the existing vans that we have are aging, and some of them weren't even new to us when we got them. I think many of them are pretty old at this point. I think she had recalled in one of our capital meetings that they either two of them had like their catalytic converters stolen over the last year or two. So we've put more money into fixing them than they're even worth. I think the larger plan was to eventually replace and even add additional vans, not only to supplement the services that the Council on Aging provides, but also for the school department. We didn't know, but they provide pickup services, I think for Birchland Park for a middle school student, rather than paying some out-of-district transportation service that dropped the town, actually, from their services. We had to find a way to provide those transportation services. So this ended up being slightly cheaper than searching for some outside contractor. So that could potentially turn into a a nice way for both the school department and the Council on Aging as a joint submission to capital to work together.
Yep. Great. Thank you, Connor.
Thank you both for that input. Is there anyone else? Any questions? Jonathan?
Just a quick one. Tom, I'm not sure if you maybe know this, but are there any other grants that are potentially going to be impacted by seeing concert? Is this the only one we we know of that's been affected recently?
This was the only earmark that that I know of, that we remain aware of. So I I don't I guess there's no way to tell what's going to happen for the rest of this quarter and quarter four, but
But at least half of right now.
Yeah, right.
We're not aware of.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure Erin is going to be thrilled.
I can't wait to send this text.
Good. Okay, next on our agenda is E C, which would normally be the approval of minutes. We are going to put that off until the next meeting. Things have been extremely busy. And we will do the approvals at the next meeting. The D is old business. I ask for this to be put back on. I took the liberty of watching the meeting last time, and I did an absolutely horrible job of explaining what I was thinking as far as the life insurance. I am not looking for this to be automatic that each one of us gets it. What I was looking for is the opportunity that an elected official could take the life insurance if they so chose to. It's not something that I'm looking for a vote or anything right now. As some of you had pointed out, you know, hey, I already have it. I don't need it. This would be extra. And I wasn't really grasping until I watched the meeting again and went, boy, I did a horrible job with that. So my thought was just to make this available to elected officials if they so chose to decide to take it. And again, at the next meeting, we'll, we can go into a discussion on it whether we want to allow that or not. But I just wanted to put this on real quick just to clarify what I was thinking. Does anyone have any thoughts on it as we go forwards? Or do you want me to look up anything before the next meeting? Connor?
Last time I was a little more hesitant about it, but now that you clarified that it could be optional and not something that we have to automatically provide to everyone by default, then I don't have an issue with it. And the total amount that I think it would cost seemed fairly negligible.
And like I said, it's one of those, I just after listening to myself, I just, I'm like, man, no wonder why they didn't understand what I was saying. So I appreciate you thinking about it. And like I said, at the February, we will be meeting a second time in February, by the way, on the twenty-seventh. I'm trying to keep that to very limited because we have the fee scheduled to go through. And I thought it would be nice to hit that at a separate meeting so that once it's done, that's it. It's out of the way. We have E, new business. We have a discussion on an amendment to a bylaw, Chapter one eighty, Commission on Disability. So this is a first reading. I am, I am going to take a shot at the the first reading. In the past, we've done a reading of everything, which I don't really think is necessary. I think what we should be doing is concentrating on the areas that get changed. So what we're looking at is under our E code, it's Chapter one eighty. The way it's originally written is Commission on Disability. We are looking to have a name change. And that's strictly what it is, is a name change. So Commission on Disability will be changed to Commission for People with Disabilities. Under subsection one eighty dash two vacancies, again, we will be changing Commission on Disability to Commission for People with Disabilities. Under one eighty dash three, Purpose, same exact thing. We're going to submit, change Commission on Disability to Commission for People with Disabilities. And one eighty dash four A, under Powers and Duties, again, it's the same thing. We are removing Commission on Disability and replacing it with Commission for People with Disabilities. Those are the only changes to the bylaw that we're proposing. Everything else stays the same, so it's strictly a name change. So with that, and with that first reading, I would ask if there is a motion to send this to the Bylaw Review Committee?
Yes, I make a motion to refer the Bylaw Amendment of Chapter one hundred and eighty, Commission on Disability to the Bylaw Review Committee for Recommendation to the Town Council.
Is there a second?
Second thought.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on it?
Just one very quick one. I'm assuming this has had a recommendation from the commission itself? Or just for the origin?
Yes, this this is actually coming from the commission itself. They asked, I believe, Tom to bring it forwards for a for a change.
Then we checked with the state. There's no actually, a lot of other commissions are doing the same thing. The name is a little more appropriate for sort of the mission statement and the spirit of of the commission. So yeah.
That was going to be my second question with the MGL.
Yep. A bunch have already done it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I am a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
That is off to the Bylaw Review Committee, which I believe will take them almost three minutes to to read it and approve it. Just my guess.
Thank you.
Next, under new business is E two, E three. We had a citizen contact, one of our counselors in regards to I well, you know what? I should turn it over to Marilyn to explain, but I believe the citizen was looking for a list of all of our votes that we had taken.
You want me to take over?
Yeah, please.
Thanks, Ralph. Actually, all of us received the initial email from the resident asking us to provide to her each of our roll call voting records list from the years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. As representative of the leadership of the council, I exchanged emails with this resident. We I shared with her how our votes were recorded, how they're included within our minutes based on Mass General Law's Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two. Along with the vote within the minutes, it also was included the rationale for why the vote was taken and any supporting documents that perhaps were involved with that subject matter. It's all part of our minutes. And that a list was not required. Our exchange went back and forth. I realized, I actually, I've learned through an impromptu meeting with, or rather, conversation with Greg Thompson. I asked if the school committee was also asked to do this. And he said, no, that their their votes as an elected body are included within their minutes just as ours are. And I thought it was interesting that it was just the town council and not both of us, but there may have been a reason for that, and I'm not sure. At any rate, our exchange went back and forth. My explanations didn't seem to be accepted. I wasn't sure if I was missing something, and perhaps we as a council should talk about it. So I asked that it be on the agenda, and it is. So I really would like to hear from my other colleagues on the council if they feel there's interest in this. I'm not sure. It's it's a reasonable request based on and I don't know, based on what kind of time commitment. Not all our votes are roll call votes. They are tonight because we're on Zoom. Many of our votes are voice votes, and so you wouldn't know unless you read the minutes. And it might say six to one, and the minutes might say who the the objecting vote was, but not necessarily. So I'm putting it out there to have this discussion. The resident is in the audience. I invited her, not invited her to come. She asked me to let her know when this was taking place. I sent her a copy of the agenda and invited her to use the Zoom link and listen to what we had to say. So that's it.
Thank you. So one of my thoughts right off at the top was most of our votes are taken on voice vote. And voice vote is either an up or down vote. We don't have to actually say it's a five to three vote. It's a four to two vote or anything like that. It's either it passed or it didn't pass. And typically, our roll call votes are very few and far between. But again, like I said, I think this is something that, you know what? It's a suggestion. It's something that I think the council should think about. I would ask Jeannie because obviously it's her office that would be between her and Jackie asked to try and keep track of this and put it into a spreadsheet. What what? What, what timeframe and stuff are we looking at as far as um, you know, tracking all of this?
Respond, Ralph? So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we do keep track of appropriation votes that we look at at the end of the year for the tax rate. But that's strictly a spreadsheet that has the vote that passed, the date it passed, and what the appropriation amount was. Uh, we would probably have to start another spreadsheet separate um. For every meeting, every counselor's name, every yes and no. It is administratively time consuming. Since I've been the uh, in the clerk's office since the town council started, we've never had a request. For this, either your public record or directly to the office, I'm not sure it's worth the time. Uh, when you look at how infrequent the request might be for something like this. And if there is a request for a specific meeting, a specific vote, they could also look at the LCAT tapes. And see who's voting yes or no against a certain item. If it was voted on, we'd be taking on as your wishes, but time consuming it was.
Um, Marilyn, I saw your hand first and then Connor.
Um, in, in one of the emails, the resident said that she spent countless hours. Looking throughout the agendas, minutes and videos for only those that had roll call votes. Um, and that sort of raised a red flag. I'm not sure. I mean, I, I, I feel like our website is pretty um, self-explanatory. We have a date. We have an agenda and a minutes to look at. Um, I'm not sure if we could do anything to improve highlighting roll call votes within our minutes. Um, I'm not sure if that would work and if that would be more time consuming.
Also, Marilyn, to piggyback on your comment, I've added, uh, after each meeting, I have a link to the LCAT tape. Right for that specific meeting too, that people could go to.
Right. I saw that. I thought that was very, very convenient.
Connor, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had three uh, thoughts on the matter. Um, I can understand the convenience aspect of the. Request, but I think it would probably be. Problematic for three reasons. One is anytime we maintain a separate list of something. There's always the potential of error, and then that could potentially cause problems in the future if the minutes said one thing. That we voted, but now this spreadsheet, not on purpose, but potentially could say something different if we copy and paste incorrectly. And then which one wins? Um, the second is, I think it's also hard to visualize in a spreadsheet sometimes when. It's not always the same list of counselors that are present or even voting on certain matters from meeting to meeting, or even item. And agendas from meeting to meeting. Um, that could kind of look a little wonky. Uh, list. And then I think third is, the information is already publicly available, both in the minutes and all of our videos on LCAT, so. It's not too time consuming to go through. I've done it on plenty of occasions and come up with my own list when I've been searching for something.
Okay. Jonathan, Kathy, Anna, any, any thoughts on it?
Um, I just had a few uh, thoughts thinking about this, Ralph. So I think, you know, it, it is a noble. Thing to definitely consider. Um, my, my chief concern though was when first reading this and and um, seeing the correspondent was. Um, that it would kind of put uh, kind of a burden on our uh, staff at town hall and the clerk's office. Um, so I think if we were to even, you know, consider this or some form of it. I think making sure that that would be hypothetically addressed. Um, and the second thing is, I, I feel if, if we were to go forward with this. Um, I think, you know, a lot of these votes are sort of, um, you know, every vote is important, but some of them are. Kind of pro forma in nature. And I think, you know, there's two groups of pretty important votes. There's financial votes. And then votes, you know, changing uh, the bylaws uh, or other matters like that. Um, so perhaps. A a compromise could be maybe taking those potential votes and publicizing maybe those um. More specifically, just, just thoughts. Um, but my chief concern would be um, it being kind of a, a, quite a burden. Where, because it technically is um, you know, on our website as it stands.
Marilyn?
One other comment. Um, the last sentence in the first email said. I am sure East Lomato taxpayers would like to know how you are supporting this community. And demonstrating that you have our town best interest in mind when you vote. And I thought about that because there's so much that we do publicly. The people I would certainly hope know. You know, that our actions are in the best interest of the community. But that being said, a list doesn't tell you that. A list just says yes, no. It doesn't share what the rationale was when you reached that decision. And maybe a no vote would have been more appropriate in that given discussion, depending on what it was. And so I, you know, I've really given a lot of thought to this because I understand um, what's being asked. But I also wonder what it's going to accomplish, simply because a yes, no, it doesn't really. Um, identify how we're, we're, we're looking at the best interests of our community. Um, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
So I would just ask, um, thoughts, wishes, um. Is there any appetite to ask Jeannie to create something or um. Or if the citizen wants to go forwards, um, suggest that they petition. The council for a bylaw change that requires roll call votes. Um, something on that idea, but, but if that was to happen, I would suggest that it would be all elected boards. Or all boards and commissions would have to do it and not just sing, um, not just uh, separating out the council. Tom?
Do you mind?
No, not at all.
Obviously, my comment will be geared towards the, the time of the clerk's department. Obviously, you can. Um. Whatever your pleasure is, is, is what we will do, obviously, but uh. We don't need to tell you how busy the clerk's office is, not just right this moment, uh, but at every moment. Um, and if this were a request, I think it should probably be made another way in that, uh, you know. If somebody's uh, making a freedom of information request, um, we have, if we deem it to be. Uh, a, a burden, uh, we can charge for that service. And if that were the case, at least. Uh, if you decided um, that that was something that, that Jeannie should undertake, uh. We sort of could be compensated for the amount of time that it would take to, to, to do something like that.
Any other comments? Connor?
I think that's a good point. And I think additionally, if there's specific items that, like anyone in the public is ever. Wondering where to find it or what any of our records are, I think any of us are more than happy to. Help us as pinpoint that, but to just kind of broadly put together. A list of everything, just on the off chance that it might be needed is kind of a futile effort at this point.
And also just like to add a quick point, when, when kind of looking this up, when this first came out, I, 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 somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I'm not aware of another municipality. In this state, um, or maybe some cities do, um, that, that would, that do this type of thing. And in the legislature, in our own legislature, it doesn't even uh, have every single vote recorded. And in some cases, they have um, voted on pretty substantial matters without a recorded roll call vote.
Anna? Get your hand or?
Yeah, I just happened to look back and I'm looking over the January ninth minutes. And. I think if there was an issue with the way that it was presented in the minutes, then maybe we should. Look it over and, but it's, it's so. Nicely done and easily um, found. Like, for instance, the vote was seven in favor, zero opposed. So obviously, obviously, we know everybody voted yes. Um, the vote was five in favor and two abstent, abstentions. And then the two abstentions are listed. Then for, and, and they're in bold letters, so you can easily find them. Further down, I think there's somebody with a no vote. Yes, the vote on the resolution was six in favor, one opposed, and then the, the opposed is listed. So obviously, that person opposed it and the six of us were for it. So I just think the way that it's done. Is. Great, and I don't see why we should have to change it. And it's, again, it's easily found and you can access it. So easily that. I'm not sure what the issue is. That's it.
So it would be my suggestion that uh, we stay status quo. Um. Our votes currently are roll call votes are kept in the minutes. And not to um, not to try and create more work for Jeannie or the office.
And that's the other thing I noticed as well, the, the roll call votes are listed, yes, no, and the counselor's name.
Everyone be in agreement with that for right now and um, if later on, we need to, to address it for some reason, we will. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item then. Yes.
I just want to compliment Jackie on those minutes because that's, that's her. And very, very easily tracked and the way she's, she has them, so thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. And we all agree. Thank you. Um, action items for next uh, meeting. Um, so the next meeting, uh, we are um, having one. On February twenty seventh. Um, we will be addressing the fee schedule, um, that'll be publicized. And that will be the second reading of the fee schedule. Um, I am recomposing everything, have it almost completed. And then I will send it to Jeannie for a once over again. And hopefully, we will be all set to uh, adopt it. Um, that's my, my main push for our next meeting. But there will probably be a couple other items slipped in here and there. Um, as they come up, it seems to. Seems to be the day before every meeting, all of a sudden, we have five additional items, Tom.
I would never.
Connor?
I just have one uh, request. From our original, um, like our last discussion at our last meeting about the free cash. Uh, numbers and potential uses. When we had like the certified amount, um, we then, like in November, spent quite a few things. In our November meeting, and of course now tonight, we've had quite a few others. Could we get an updated? Like final amount for our next meeting as well to know what we have outstanding?
Done.
Thank you so much.
So I think that's a great point, and um, I'm just gonna elaborate a little bit, like at our last meeting. Um. We talked about different things that would be coming up, that are coming up. Um. And ultimately, it falls to the town manager and uh, finance director to. To look at our different accounts, to make sure that they're funded correctly, and to bring to us their suggestions on. Um, where they think the money should go. Um, I think it's nice once in a while for us just to take a quick look at it and say, hey. Is this, this, and this still going on? Um. Just so that we don't forget anything overall. There's so many different aspects going on, and I know we're in the budget process right now and. Um, I stood in uh. Literally the town manager's uh, office and just watched a stream of people walking in and out of budget uh, cycle, so. Um, it is a busy time of year. Connor can attest with uh, all the capital meetings and all, so. Um, it's just to basically give them a little boost and say, hey, you know, this is a great thing. Let's uh, let's keep the good stuff going. Does anyone have any action items for our next meeting that they would like to see added in? Okay, um.
I'm not, I'll wait, I'll wait for like thirteen days and I'll let you know.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Um. Originally, we uh, we had talked about doing an executive session tonight. Um, I've asked that to be pushed off to the twenty seventh. Um, because I feel in person is a lot easier to do an executive session than through a Zoom meeting. So we will do an executive session after our uh, February twenty seventh meeting. And um, the last item on the agenda is a adjournment.
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Is there any further discussion? None? With that, it is still a roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I am a yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
That ends our meeting for this evening. I'd like to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it and uh, stay safe.
You as well.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you for everything.
Have a nice trip, Kathy.
Thank you.